Assalamualaikum.
Wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
We will start now. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Distinguished participants, dear colleagues. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Wassalamu ala bi na Muhammad wa ala ali wa sahbi ajma'i. It gives us a tremendous pleasure today to welcome you to this public hearing session on the Exposed Drafts of Ayufi Financial Accounting Standards on Deferred Delivery Sales and Estasna based Development Contracts. Ayufi has previously addressed these aspects of financial reporting requirements in Fast Seven, Salam and Paralllel Salam, and Fast Ten, Estasna and Paralllel Estasna, which were identified for revision during the Comprehensive Review and Revision Project initiated by Ayufi Accounting Board. The public hearing is one of multiple steps in a standard development process at Ayufi and represents an opportunity for us to interact with and benefit from the knowledge, experience, and wisdom of professional individuals and experts from all corners of the industry on the newly issued Exposed Drafts. This event is held in collaboration with Dubai Islamic Bank. We would like to thank them for taking the effort and extending their support and organizing today's public hearing. On this occasion, we would like to welcome Dr. Mohammed Ghazim, Member of Governance and Ethics Board, Sharia Scholars and Islamic Banking Experts, Chairman and Members of Sharia Boards of Several Islamic Banks to give us the opening remarks. Dr. Ghazim, the floor is yours.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, the Rob'il A'lamim, Wassalamu ala Sallim wa ala alihi wa sahbi ajma'i. Dear participants. At the outset, I would like to highlight that Salam is a contract permissible in Sharia and acceptable to all Fath'i schools. Its legitimacy is derived from the Holy Quran, the Sunnah, and Ijma. When the Prophet peace be upon him arrived in Medina, he observed that people were selling dates for deferred delivery after one or two years on Salam basis. He advised them that payments for dates of deferred delivery should be based on specific weight and measure. So as long as the weight, the measurement is known, specified in the contract and the delivery date is known, the amount of the capital or the purchase price of Salam is paid upfront. It is a fully Sharia-compliant contract. So there is an Ijma or consensus on permissibility of Salam. Similarly, the legitimacy of Estasna is rooted in the Prophet peace be upon him's own request for the manufacture of a pulpit by a carpenter and a finger ring, as well as the practice of the Salaf, which is called Ta'amuul Salaf. And by Salaf, we mean the companions, the Sahabah, the Tab'awood, radhwanullah alaihi majma'ee. The beauty of Sharia lies in offering tailor-made solutions for every segment of the real economy. And this is contrary to the conventional financing, which uses interest-based debt, instruments for every situation. Ayufi has allowed both contracts and issued separate Sharia standards for Salam as well as Estasna. Globally Islamic financial institutions use these contracts to meet financial needs of their customers. This shows that the principles and contracts of Sharia are practical and applicable in today's different business environments and legal jurisdictions, aligning with contemporary requirements. All Estasna was initially allowed by Ahnaf only, but today effectively it is used by the followers of all Fath'i schools, the Malikiya, the Shafi'iya, and the Hanabila. The role of the way Islamic Bank in developing Estasna and other innovative structures. The way Islamic Bank does the leading Islamic Bank and the whole model is a pioneer in innovation. And it has been effectively using both Salam and Estasna contracts for many years. For example, the DIB covered card is structured based on Salam contract. Similarly, DIB uses Estasna for retail financing, such as home financing, as well as for corporate and business banking needs, for construction purposes and financing even with projects. Estasna not only helps us to provide financing in advance, but it also ensures that the funds are used appropriately. Disbursements are linked to specific milestones during construction and manufacturing, helping prevent misuse and ensuring compliance with Sharia principles. In UAE's context, the licensed institutions under the Central Bank of UAE currently follow international financial reporting standards for their financial reporting. And as such, they are not following the Ayufi accounting standards. And therefore presently, they will not be affected adversely or in any way by adoption of these standards. Undoubtedly, the practitioners, Islamic bankers, and Sharia scholars, they all agree that financial reporting and accounting is an essential part of proper Islamic banking. The main goal of financial reporting is to provide useful and reliable information for all the stakeholders. Your books should capture the real essence of your contracts. Islamic financial transactions such as Mudarab, Usharab, Ijarah, Salam, and Estasna are undoubtedly different in nature from conventional bank instruments. Current IFRS standards or any other framework may not fully capture their true nature. Therefore, this matter requires their post-attention from regulators and Sharia scholars, communities, and boards, especially the standard-setting bodies. It is essential that Sharia compliance should not be limited to structuring and documentation alone. Rather, it should be extended to accounting practices and financial reporting as well, ensuring that Islamic financial transactions are accurately and transparently reflected in the financial statements and books of the Islamic financial institutions. Financial reporting is not merely about recording executed transactions as it has serious Sharia implications and significant impact on profit recognition. IFRS and Ayufi have different approaches to profit recognition, which directly impact profit sharing and distribution to depositors of Islamic banks. In this regard, I really commend the efforts made by Ayufi, which is actively working on developing new standards, not just issuing new ones, but also continuously updating and reviewing the existing standards and proposing amendments to better align with the industry needs and contemporary trends. Demonstrating Ayufi's commitment to ensuring that Islamic financial reporting remains relevant, effective, and also captures the real nature of the underlying contracts. However, let me point out that there are certain practical challenges faced by Islamic banks when they wish to implement Ayufi accounting standards, which require further discussion and resolution by Ayufi itself and by central banks and all those who are involved. For instance, under IFRS, banks typically recognize revenue and accrue income from the first day of transaction of discussion. Definitely following the conventional methodology, adopting a more immediate recognition approach. In contrast, Ayufi standards generally require that revenue can only be recognized upon the transfer of control of the inventory from the seller to the buyer or to the, in this case, the Islamic financial institution. This means that until a Salam or Estasna asset has not been delivered to the institution and subsequently sold to the customer or leased to the customer, the banks, under Ayufi accounting standards cannot recognize revenue in their financial statements. And this can create a large gap in their revenues. So definitely, this needs further scholarly discussion, not only on the accounting side, but also in developing new structures by the Sharia committees, Sharia scholar communities to cater for these needs. And then there are some specific comments from our team at the way Islamic Bank, which may be shared later by Brother Janazir or maybe myself during our discussion. I don't want to speak further. Let us start our discussion and listen to the participants' comments. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
Thank you, Dr. Ghazim. Thank you, Dubai Islamic Bank, for your cooperation and support. Now, and without further ado, let me move right to the virtual floor. Mr. Harun Tabriz, Senior Constant Researcher at Ayufi, who will present the Exposed Drafts and walk you through its main content while answering your question in an interactive session. Brother Harun, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I hope everyone can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ghazim, for the encouraging words regarding Ayufi. And we would be happy to hear your comments on these two standards. Let me share the screen now. So today, we have a heavy agenda. We would be discussing two standards. First would be, maybe I have... Apologies, I shared the wrong standard first. Let me share the correct one. So we would be discussing two standards today, the Deferred Delivery Sales and the Estasna Development Contracts. So I would start with the Deferred Delivery Sales standard first. Let me walk you through this standard. A couple of housekeeping rules before. Kindly use the Q and A tab if you want to ask a question because Sister Aura and Sister Syira would be monitoring this Q and A tab. Please don't write in the chat tab because we will not be monitoring that. So any questions should only be in the Q and A tab. Now, as Dr. Ghazim explained, that deferred delivery sales is one of the important contracts in Islamic banking, specifically Dubai Islamic Bank is working a lot on these contracts. Previously, we had two standards, Financial Accounting Standard 7, that was Salam and Paralllel Salam, and Financial Accounting Standard 10, that was Estasna and Paralllel. Now, due to the revision project of Ayufi that is going on since the last four or five years, where we have introduced new standards and revised the previous standards, we thought of revising the Salam-Estasna standards. And the discussion was that what the Salam and Estasna standards should be separate as before, like Fast Seven and Fast Ten, or we should find out a model where we could actually use the deferred delivery sales concept and make up a standard regarding that. If you recall, when Ayufi revised Financial Accounting Standard 28, that is Murabah, the new standard was not only on Murabah, it also covered deferred payment sales. So in this same value, we thought that the deferred delivery sales and development contracts should be combined to be one standard. And the today's discussion would be based on this deferred delivery sales concept. Now... Dr. Ghazim has discussed Salam and Estasna very generously. So I would not be going into the Sharia details of that. Salam and Estasna both are deferred delivery sales, where payment is made in advance and delivery of the goods are to be made at a deferred date. In Salam, the full price has to be paid on the spot, whereas in Estasna, it may be allowed that you can pay in installments based on certain performance obligations. We will discuss these obligations when we will go through the standard. Now, first, why we thought of reissuing this standard? The reason was that Ayufi introduced the new conceptual framework in 2020 and revised Financial Accounting Standards 1 also. Certain terminologies were harmonized. For example, we came up with this quasi-equity concept, which was not there in the previous standards. And we also tried to align all our standards with IFRS as much as possible. So the concept is that Ayufi would prescribe an accounting treatment only when there is a Sharia impediment in adopting the treatment applied by IFRS. So we can say that wherever it is possible, we are aligned with the accounting treatments of IFRS. Now, Financial Accounting Standard 7 and Financial Accounting Standard 10, they were one of the earlier standards issued by Ayufi. So the terminology is used was not according to the recent terminologies that are used by the recently issued accounting standards. So that was one of the concern. And the second concern was that being an early standard, both Financial Accounting Standard 7 and Financial Accounting Standard 10 included Sharia factors. So now, you should remember that initially, Ayufi issued Financial Accounting Standards, which included the Sharia stipulations. But later on, it was decided that we should have a separate Sharia standard and a separate accounting standard. So while we were developing this standard, we made sure that Sharia aspects are, which are covered in the Sharia standards, are not duplicated in this account system. Now, this revised standard combines certain aspects of both Financial Accounting 7 and Financial Accounting 10. There was a discussion that both of these products are deferred delivery sales. So would it be possible if we create one accounting model which can cater to both of these transactions? So the result is that now this standard, deferred delivery sales, includes the Salam transactions and Estasna transactions, but does not cover those Estasna transactions, which are development in nature. We will cover this in the next standard, which is the Estasna Development Standard. So the delivery sales, deferred delivery sales, both Estasna and Salam are included in this current standard. We have discussed that Sharia requirements are not here. Let me remind everyone that this presentation is coming from the standard itself. It is nothing else than the standard. And the standard is available for reading on Ayufi's website. You can download it and read it. So this standard is actually the wordings which are used in... This presentation is actually the wordings which are used in the standard. Now, the objective of this standard is to prescribe the appropriate accounting and reporting principles for recognition, measurement, presentation, disclosure of deferred delivery sales transactions. And deferred delivery sales includes both Salam and Estasna transactions. And the new standards prescribe accounting treatment for both the buyers and the sellers. For the counterparty transaction base also included in this standard. Now, the scope of this standard is applicable to deferred delivery transactions carried out by, out under Sharia principles and rules by the Islamic institutions, the Islamic banks, and other institutions, which follow Ayufi accounting standards. The scope does not include those Estasna transactions that are development transactions, that we can see that they are... They include extent of work. We will discuss this later in the presentation. So development contract is another standard, and we are only discussing the deferred delivery sales. Now, this standard does not include where the buyer develops and leaves out the subject matter according to Ijarah Munta ya Bit Tammuli Kaddishmi, because this would cover in Financial Accounting Standard 32, which is Ijarah. Or the buyer is developing a subject matter for its own consumption, for own use, self-use. So this is also not covered in this standard. So we are only discussing sale transaction where trading is happening. Trading means where you are making something and selling. The definitions section includes certain definitions. Before starting on definitions, let me clarify that the main accounting of Financial Accounting Standard 7 and 10 has not been changed. It is only clarified. So these definitions are clarification of the old definitions, which were in the previous standard. We have not included anything that is new, except for the development part, which we will discuss in the next ten. So deferred delivery sale is a sale transaction, which is carried out in line with the Sharia principles and rules, which could either be a Salam transaction or a Estasna transaction. And in this, the primary performance obligation is delivery of the subject matter. Subject matter could be a crop in case of Salam. A subject matter could be garments in case of Estasna, which is for export purposes. Deferred delivery sales do not include a transaction that is promised to be carried out on a specific future date against a unilateral promise. Because this future promise would be covered in the Wad Fiyar and Ta'wab standard. This is not in the scope of deferred delivery sale. The sale has not happened, it is just a promise. So it would be covered under the Wad transaction. Estasna is a contract to seller described asset. Described asset means it must be a specified asset with deferred delivery under a manufacturing request. Usually, you would request to make a specified asset, to manufacture it, construct it in case of a building. In practicality, it is a sale contract between the buyer and the seller, whereby the seller, based on an order from the buyer, undertakes to manufacture or have it get manufactured or otherwise the subject matter of the contract according to the specifications from the buyer for an agreed-upon price and method of settlement, where in advance by installments or deferred to a specific future time. So in case of Estasna, you would be manufacturing a specified asset. In case of Salam, it will not be a specified asset. It would be an asset which is homogeneous, which is easily available in the market. So the Sharia differences of Estasna and Salam would remain there in this definition. We have created a new definition, and that is Estasna-based development contract. Now, these are the contracts, which would be covered in the next other standard, which we will be discussing later. The definition of an Estasna-based development contract is coming in from the other standard. It says that it is a contract for development of an asset. It could be a property, plant, and equipment item, which meets certain criterias. Now, these criterias are the differences from the current standard and the other standard. It involves a significant element of effort on the part of development, which could be labor and services. And this effort needs to be compensated in case where the delivery is not made. We would discuss this aspect when we would be discussing the next standard. The second characteristic is that Estasna-based development contract has either an element of partial control transferred through milestones, taste delivery on the customer's own property, or otherwise defines multiple performance obligations as part of the contract. And these performance obligations, they could be individually assessed or used as criteria for determining stage of completion. So we can find out in an Estasna-based development contract which stage of development we are, what is the percentage of completion of this project. And the third characteristic is that the subject matter is intended for specific needs of an identified unique customer. And hence, we generally not have a ready market or may not be in a position, condition suited for it sale to a third party. Only one customer could use it. This type of property, construction, manufactured, plant and machinery is usually not for sale in the open market. It is only made for a specific customer. There is a... Oh, babe. Someone is asking a question.
Yes, brother, there are a couple of questions in the Q and A tab. And first, we have like...
Yes, brother, there are a couple of questions in the Q and A tab and first we have like, you know, or people have raised hand in both. The panel as well as in the attendees.
So if you can take me through the questions one by one.
The first question is by brother Makawi Ismail, Assalamualaikum Wa Hymdallah. First, I would like to thank you very much for inviting us to attend this public hearing. My question is about deferred delivery sales. The definition five A did not include some sales promised to be carried out on future dates, so under which other A O P standard?
Uh so uh brother, uh the quick answer is that if it is a future, uh if it is a future promise. Uh uh sale would happen at a future date, which is not included in Istisna or Salem. Then it would be covered under the Vath uh financial account.
Another another question is by brother A K M, Miznoo Rahman. My first question is as per regulatory requirement, any finance to be reported in the name of customer? It is applicable for advanced Salem payment, but in case of sale through agent or directly on deferred payment basis. Can we say it financing? If yes, how?
Uh actually, this would be covered under the governance part, uh this is uh actually not a accounting concept. So um we would actually discuss this uh towards the end. Uh because uh right now we would be focusing only on the accounting issues.
Uh brother Arsalan's team has raised their hand in the panel, should we uh let them ask their question?
Assalamualaikum, thank you very much, uh I have question related to scope of this standard. It is mentioned that this standard shall not be applied to such transaction where the institution being buyer of subject matter. Has intention to lease out or eventually sell the asset. So when we, you know, technically practically see the transactions, how the products products are structured. Stand alone Istisna and Salem, they don't work, right? They are always clubbed or supplemented with lease or sale at the end. So what I understood from this statement, if let's suppose there is Istisna with forward Ijarah or if there is Salem with sale. This standard shall not apply in that case, if that is the situation, then what would be the treatment during the phase of, you know, Salem or Istisna? It's not clear in this.
No, brother, we would actually discuss this uh later uh in the section. Uh yes, you can club it with a Murabah transaction, so uh you know Salem or Istisna plus Murabah could be there. But uh when you uh lease out uh uh an asset, transfer ownership. Then uh it would be coming under the Ijarah standard and Ijarah standard is uh separate, you know, separate from here. So yes, we can actually have uh uh Istisna or Salem contract coupled with a Murabah.
My question was if we locate uh the scope currently mentioned there. It says if eventually the intention is to lease or sell, this standard shall not apply, which means because all the products are structured in this manner.
Okay, so.
Apparently, it it gives a meaning that this standard shall not apply in such.
Yeah, uh so um it actually uh is based on, uh you know, if you own it. Or if it is uh 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 you want to uh use it for yourself. Uh if if you look at part B, uh use the subject matter in its own operation, self-euro or self-consumption. Uh when you lease out an asset, uh you own that asset for the lease period and then you eventually sell it. Right, so both of these uh according to the accounting model would be the same. You would actually be using it for your own purposes, uh even when you are leasing it out or whether you are uh uh self-using. Yes.
Oh Harun, this is me and Aziz, I think you know I what Arsalan is trying to, you know, uh get at is that uh. You know, there are two component, one is the disbursement that may occur under sale Istisna or a sale. And typically, financial structure. And that, you know, servicing contract could be either a lease. Or a sale transaction pursuant to an agency. So if we differentiate between, you know, we specifically exclude in this standard. Uh the second leg or limb of a transaction, then the standard would stand on this, it does not work. And it will create an arbitrage or if again. And this will also in a due section where I O P standard, Sharia standard are minimum. Standard for Sharia compliance with respect to impossibility of the Sharia name of the contract. This will create a big issue of impossibility of actually a nominated contract. So I think we need to, you know, have a reasonable, reasonable level of, you know, of respect of this statement as well as definition.
So uh uh brother, um um sister Saira, can you just uh record this comment?
As Arsalan mentioned, understand and on basis, this does not work, this, you know, yeah, you know, either you are buying or selling.
Yes, may I add one thing, this is Dr. Kasim. As a matter of fact, my colleagues, the brother Mia, brother Arsalan, they are trying to 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 highlight the fact. That if you say this, effectively you are saying that this would not apply to. Salam and Istisna as used by Islamic financial institutions, so why should we be involved in?
Okay, so uh uh I I can understand your uh issue and I can understand that this wording is actually creating a problem. So, Dr. Kasim, thank you for this comment, uh we would look at the wording here. Because uh you know, the concept that we want is uh is not coming out uh like you are saying, right? So it actually may create a problem, yeah.
And I would also uh suggest or recommend to A U P that whether they.
Yeah.
Uh uh they work particularly at the working group stage. Before the standard is submitted to the uh to the board for for if you had approval. Uh I I think you have some practitioners, but you should should be at least some somebody who who is expert in drafting. Legal wording and also a Sharia scholar, I didn't see any Sharia scholar that I know, you may have, I don't know. Because most of the names uh I'm not familiar with them. Is there anybody a Sharia scholar in the working room?
Uh uh Dr. Kasim, uh what happens is that uh the accounting uh board uh reviews the standard. And then it is sent to the Sharia committee of the Sharia board, A O P Sharia board. Uh so uh at least four or five Sharia scholars who are on the Sharia committee, uh you know, they go through the standard word by word. Uh I am not sure that this process has been done because sometimes we do the public hearing before sending it to the. Sharia committee and sometimes it is afterwards. You know, public hearing is just a uh uh the the objective of public hearing is just to get uh comments from the public. Uh uh about the suitability of the accounting treatment, right? So um.
And during the development, the the process of developing the standard.
Yes, yes, so uh you know, this is, this is part of. So this is part of our due process that uh all accounting standards uh needs to be vetted. By the Sharia committee of the A O P Sharia board, so um you know, uh because Sharia is supreme, it is paramount, uh it would actually come in. So uh this standard would also go there. So Sister Saira, can you just uh note down this comment? That uh we need to look at the uh wording and see whether it clashes with the uh the sale and uh uh these factors, right?
Right, noted.
Correct, uh there were other questions also. Thank you, Dr. Kasim, for the clarification, uh we really uh we really uh.
The other questions in the Q and A tab pertained to the later part of the uh exposure draft, not to this part. There are two uh attendees who raised their hands, should we give them the mic or should we ask them to write on the?
Um I think we can give them the mic, uh we have time, yes.
Brother Alfonso, can you uh please ask the question? Mr. Abay Della. Mr. Abay Della.
Uh if you are not able to uh use the mic, then you can actually uh write in the Q and A tab. Uh read the question there also. So uh we can take the questions later also, uh we will just record it, uh I'll continue if you permit. The next definition is a parallel sale, uh which is an arrangement whereby the seller enters into an independent Salem contract. And this is the important part where Salem and parallel Salem are two independent uh transactions. Two independent contracts. And uh if you look at the definition, uh the first Salem. Without making the execution of the second Salem contract dependent on the execution of the first one. Uh in contemporary customs, such second uh. Uh contract is usually called a parallel Salem. Uh and in practice, we can change the sequence of the transactions. We can do the parallel Salem transaction first and the Salem transaction afterwards. Uh so these are the two different uh uh contracts which have no uh. No uh relationship with each other except for the subject matter. The subject matter of the first uh contract would be sold in the parallel Salem contract. Uh in the same way, uh we have an parallel Istisna uh arrangement. Whereby the seller or developer uh enters into another independent Istisna contract with a third party. So there is one Istisna contract between the customer and the bank and the second contract, which is a parallel Istisna. Where the bank would uh sell this to a third party or it would be the other way around. And these two independent contracts, uh except for the subject matter are completely independent of each other. So uh you can change the sequence of these transactions. Salem is a sale of unspecified commodity for deferred delivery in exchange for immediate payment in full in line with Sharia principles and rules. Uh it is, uh we have given an explanation here that it is a type of sale in which the price, uh which is usually known as the capital. Is fully paid at the time of contracting while the delivery is uh deferred to a specific time in future. Now, this standard covers deferred delivery sales both in the books of buyer and the seller. We would be doing uh the recording in the books of the buyer first and then in the book of sales. So the counterparty transaction is also covered in this time. Now, uh in Salem transaction, um whenever an advance is made by the buyer to the customers. Um it is recognized in case of a Salem transaction at the time of entering into a Salem contract as advance for Salem goods. Equivalent to the amount of cash paid. So if you have paid one thousand dollars, uh it would be recorded as advance for certain folks. Uh in case of Istisna, as in when the advance payment uh in Istisna and Salem, the difference is that in Salem you have to pay the full amount. In Istisna, it would be the lump sum or you can be in installments depending on the contract. Uh it is uh also recorded as advance for Istisna books. Uh so when you are making the payment, uh revenue is not recognized. Only an advance against uh delivery of goods is recognized. So uh you would record advanced cash payments. When the inventory is acquired uh after making this advanced payment. It is, it shall be recognized by the buyer once it controls the subject matter of Salem or Istisna transaction. And uh control is coming in from the control standard which says that the control is when you. Essentially acquire the risk and rewards incidentally to ownership of the subject matter. So, once the risk and rewards are transferred from the seller to the buyer. The buyer would record inventory in his books. Uh initially, inventory shall be recorded at cost. Uh the standard identifies that the cost is the cost of purchase. Uh to bring the asset to the present condition and location. Uh you can add uh the taxes which are not uh recoverable. Uh so uh value added tax is not part of this, uh any tax which is not recoverable needs to be added. Transportation and handling costs including uh uh other costs attributable to bring the subject matter to present condition and location. Uh it also uh. It also includes uh the trade discounts, rebates, performance bonus and similar items if any. Uh which needs to be adjusted with the costs. So um the cost is usually the same, which uh we uh recognize for all assets, uh even in Muraba standard. Any cost to bring the asset to the present condition and location. Now, in case inventory is required on a piecemeal basis, uh uh where you get one part of inventory. In one tranche and the next part in another tranche, uh the risk and reward is being transferred uh. Piecemeal, so uh you would record this according to uh the risk and divorce being transferred which are covered in paragraph eight. Uh this condition should be met. Now, subsequent measurement for advances for Salem goods and advance for Istisna goods, uh. They should be carried uh at their outstanding amount, less any allowance for impairment. And outstanding amount represents the gross amounts of advance uh for Salem or advance for Istisna. Less inventories received or any adjustments including recoveries, discounts, rebates and performance bonuses if any. Now, the thing to note here is that uh if you look at ten. We have written that the gross amount of advance for Salem goods and Istisna goods. Shall be carried at their outstanding amount, less allowance for impairment, uh because uh. This advance is uh would be converted into goods when you would receive the goods. Uh you will not collect money against this advance, this is advance for goods. Therefore, uh the allowance for impairment is used, so uh credit losses, expected credit losses. Would not be accounted according to the A O P financial accounting standard for this type of advance because you would not be getting cash. You would be getting goods in return, so uh impairment would be tested for these words. Alance for impairment, if any, shall be accounted for according to the FAST thirty impairment credit losses and on risk commitments. Uh a delay in or inability of seller to perform delivery shall be considered as an objective evidence of impairment. So if there is a delay or the seller is not able to make the delivery on time. Then you need to check uh the impairment, uh because the value of this uh uh code may have uh gone down. And uh there would be an impairment in process. Uh inventories are subsequently measured uh based on the lower of cost or net realizable value. Uh now, determination of any adjustment to bring down the value of inventories to the net realizable value. Uh it would be uh once again uh treated according to FAST thirty. Uh, it would be, uh, once again, uh, treated according to FAS thirty which covers this impairment, credit losses and on those, uh, commitments. A devil, delivery of the subject matter which does not match the contractual spec- specifications. Uh, and you have accepted it, uh, then you need, uh, to reassess the net realizable value because it is not according to your specifications. Uh, so the value may have gone down. Any additional handling or holding costs of, uh, inventories. They are not to be included in this value, they would be charged to the profit and loss account for the period. And this is, uh, in line with the, uh, uh, the accounting treatment of inventories that we do. Inventory would be de-recognized, you would take the inventory out of your books. When the control is transferred to the eventual buyer in the form of sale. Uh, so when you have sold off this asset, you would, uh, uh, de-recognize the inventory. Uh, in case the control is lost, uh, there may be a situation where you have lost the control. Due to, uh, theft or a physical damage or destruction. Uh, then also you would de-recognize the inventory. Or, uh, these lose their capacity of providing future economic benefit, uh. For example, technological obsolescence, legal restrictions of, or if there is no expected benefit. Uh, you cannot sell it to any party because of, uh, legal restriction, then you would de-recognize the inventory. And record a loss in your financial status. Now, advance for Salam goods and advance for Istasna goods. Shall be de-recognized, uh, when the delivery happens, so, uh, once you receive the subject matter. Uh, if it is specified, uh. Then whenever you have received the specified subject matter. Or sometimes if it is substituted with mutual agreement, uh, then also. Uh, you would, um, de-recognize the advance and record the inventory. When the subject is no more, no more deliverable and advanced payments, they're against are refunded with mutual consent. In case, uh, the transaction is not happening and you have, uh, refunded, uh, repaid the advance, then you would de-recognize it. Uh, or when due to the seller's insolvency or other limitations, uh, the advance cannot be recovered. And when the buyer waves its rights by writing it off or gifts it as a part of the seller. So these are the conditions where, uh, the advance needs to be de-recognized from the books of the seller. Uh.
There are a couple of questions.
Yes, uh.
Related to the, these sections, so there's a first question relating to Para.
Sorry Sarah, uh, I could, I cannot hear you.
Sorry, hello. In case of point sixteen of deferred delivery sales, why handling costs related to inventories will not be charged to inventory? Why will it be charged to statement of income?
So, uh, let me go to paragraph sixteen, uh. So, this is the additional handling and holding costs relating to inventories. Uh, which you are incurring because you are keeping the inventories in your possession. This is not the inventory that, uh, this is not the cost that was put in. Uh, for you to bring the, uh, inventory to your premises, uh, so, uh, this. Uh, just like, uh, in case of a manufacturing concern would be considered as a, uh, a revenue expense. It is not included in the cost of inventories. You know, the holding costs when you have received the inventory and, uh, before you would dispatch it to the seller. Now, this would be, uh, very rare because, uh, you know, you would make and make, uh, uh. Uh, customer the agent and sell it from their premises. So usually you will not have these handling costs. But in case you, uh, you know, you get these inventory items in your premises. Then any further holding costs will be charged to the profit.
Another question is on seventeen C. Is it possible to not having any expected buyer in case of Salam or Istasna?
Now, uh, um. Salam and Istasna would be, uh, between the customer and the bank, uh, so, uh. What do you mean by buyer if we can just, uh, clarify this, uh? What I understand is that, uh, you are asking that, uh, the bank receives Salam goods or Istasna goods. Without having a buyer, but this, uh, does not happen in real, reality. You would actually have a buyer first and then you would, uh, get the Salam puts in.
If I am permitted to intervene, brother, uh.
Yes.
So, is it not more appropriate to delete this? Why should we say something which will create some confusion?
Because the asset, the long assets are not identified assets.
So if we, if we purchase something which has no expected buyer, then I think the management of that financial institution should be taken to task.
That's true, that's true, uh, uh, Sister Saira, uh, please move this down, this is a very good point, thank you, uh, thank you very much for this. Uh, we should actually delete this because you know, this transaction will not happen if you don't have any buyer.
It's really hypothetical.
Yeah, yeah, you're only hyper, yes.
This could be in a real world, uh.
Uh, legal restrictions, legal restrictions would work because there may be a restriction after you enter into a contract.
Yeah, because of, for any reason, security reason or for any.
Yeah, yeah.
A sovereign decision can come and, and just stop you from selling something or restrictions on certain. Uh, buyers, end buyers. On numbers, we also, brother Harun, the.
He also doesn't exist.
This, uh, number sixteen, any additional handling and holding costs. Related to inventories, for example, if we are going to sell the asset acquired through Istasna by way of Murabah. So then how will I reach at my actual cost? In this case, you are excluding it.
Uh, brother, what happens is that, uh, the cost of inventory is, uh, usually. Till, uh, the time you have received it, uh, the, so inventory would be recorded at the cost when you receive it. Uh, in your premises, uh, any. Holding cost afterwards will not be included in the cost of inventory, that would be charged to the P and L. So, uh, I received, uh, goods in my go down on first January twenty twenty four. Till that day, the cost was ten thousand dollars. But now I'm keeping it for one more week in my go down and there is a handling cost. This will not be cost of inventory, this cost would be charged to the profit and loss. Now, this is a very rare situation. This is a very rare situation, but it may happen because.
And I may be forced by any circumstances, particularly maybe by customer. By, by delay, uh, delay by the customer to take delivery from me, I need to hold it, so it is a direct cost.
It is not, uh, it will not be the cost of inventory, you will actually charge it to your P and L. You cannot increase the cost of inventory by.
When I charge it to the P and L, it means that I am going to take the head. I'm not going to pass it on to the customer despite the fact that it is because of the customer that I have been holding it for another week. So I think, uh, I, I just highlight it please.
Yes, um, okay, okay, we can.
Better, uh, charge of four to.
Looks, uh, so Saira, we, uh, we would highlight it for discussion in the, uh, working group. That, uh, what type of situation could be there and maybe we would explain it in a more, uh. Thank you, Dr. Qasim for the valuable comments.
Go back to brother, if you could kindly go back to the, uh, where you mentioned the three length of, uh, yeah, this one. The control is last E G in the form of physical loss or theft, so. These are, these are almost same as technically, I'm telling that delivery or the settlement or termination of the contract. These are still deliverable assets.
After that, you have, after that, you have recorded the asset as an inventory, you have received it. Uh, that's why you're, you, you have recorded in your books. Now, after your recording, the controls.
After the delivery, is it after the delivery?
Yes, this is after. Right, uh, so should we proceed?
Please go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So, uh, coming to revenue and profit recognition, uh, revenue shall be recognized at cross value at the time of sale of the subject matter. Uh, to the eventual buyer, it would either be directly. Or through an agent which shall coincide with the time of transfer of control of inventory. Uh, we have discussed that in seventeen A. And there is an explanation here that the gross revenue shall be the total amount billed to the eventual buyer. Directly or through an agent without any reduction of agency fee or incentive table to the agent. So we will not, uh, uh, show the net revenue after deduction of agency fee, we would show the gross revenues. Uh, and there is a second explanation, eh, that is buyer shall not recognize any revenue. Hence profit till the time the subject matter of Salam or Istasna is not sold to the eventual buyer. So, uh, you will record revenue only when the risk and rewards have been transferred from you to another part. And, uh, you have, uh, transferred the control. And this should be at the gross amount, this should not be at the net amount. And the reason is that, uh, any payment of agency fee is a separate contract, this is not part of this contract. And, uh, uh, we cannot combine two contracts into one accounting transaction. So, uh, you know, making a payment for agency fee is separate, it should be recorded separately. And the revenue should be recorded separately. Uh, agency fee could be fixed or it could be variable, uh, as an incentive. Uh, it shall be accounted for in a separate, uh, uh, from the gross revenue arising on the transaction. And it will not be netted off. Now, goods purchased under deferred delivery sale contract, uh, sold on deferred payment basis. So in case where the subject matter is purchased under. A deferred delivery sale contract and then it is sold to an eventual buyer under a Murabah or another deferred payment contract. So, uh, you know, uh, a Salam contract or an Istasna contract, uh, with a Murabah sale contract. Or any other deferred payment, right? The revenue shall be recognized in line with the requirements of the respective AOP phases. In that case, we would use the Murabah and other deferred payment contract and recognize the profit. Uh, over the period of the transactions because it's a deferred, uh, payment transaction, you would, uh, get, uh, payment. Uh, at the end or, uh, in installments and you need to amortize this profit over the period of the transaction. This is covered in Financial Accounting Standard twenty eight. So the first transaction is Salam or Istasna. And the second transaction would be a Murabah where you are selling this asset, uh, to a customer, to a buyer. On deferred payment and you would record this according to Financial Accounting Standard twenty eight. Now, presentation and disclosure, uh, requirements are given in Financial Accounting Standard, uh, one. Which is, uh, generally, uh, the general presentation and disclosures in the financial statements. Uh, but, uh, this standard also adds certain things to that, uh, you need to. Provide the accounting policies which are adopted for deferred delivery sale. Uh, recognition of Salam and Istasna goods, uh, inventory, revenue, cost of sales, profit. So the accounting policies for, uh, recognition of all these items. Then, the disclosures in respect of purchase of such, subject matter, which would be the advance for Salam goods. Uh, if it, if the full payment is made, uh, advance for Istasna goods, uh. Full or part payment is paid commitments, liability in respect of outstanding amounts if there is any impairment or not. Uh, net realizable value of inventory, we discussed that, uh, inventory needs to be, uh, at lower of cost or N R V. Uh, then, we need to give appropriate disclosures for sale of the subject matter under. Uh, agency or parallel deferred delivery, uh, sale contract, uh, what is the amount of sale which. Uh, is bifurcated between receivable from the eventual buyer and the agent. And revenue and profit recognition and any credit loss in the, uh, uh, in the second leg of this transaction. This would be accorded, uh, according to Financial, uh, Accounting Standard thirty impairment, credit losses and on this. And then, uh, presentation and disclosure continuation is that any unamortized deferred profits against deferred delivery sales. Receivable respectively, providing a movement of the same during duly, uh, during the period duly disclosed as a deduction from the outstanding amount of loss received. So if there is any deferred profit against the deferred delivery sales receivable, it would be, uh, recorded as a dedu- deduction from this and shown. As a separate line item and if there is an unrest commitment, it would be shown as, uh, 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 unrest commitment according to Financial Accounting Standard thirty. The balance of the advance for Salam goods and advance, uh, for Istasna goods. And outstanding tables, uh, it shall be presented on the appropriate side of the statement of financial position without netting off. And where amounts and material, the disclosures mentioned in paragraph twenty two may separately identify between Salam and Istasna in the most of the financial statements. Considering the different risk factors associated with them, uh, uh, respective. So the risk profile of both transaction is different. Uh, therefore, where the amounts and material, the disclosures, uh, should. Identify whether it's a Salam transaction or Istasna transaction. And where the contracts include a parallel element, uh, where there is another, uh, uh, transaction to sell a Salam or Istasna goods. Uh, they should be separately identified, uh, with amounts, uh. Now, it's come to the deferred delivery sales in the books of the seller. Uh, Sarah, is there any question for the part that we have covered?
There is a question, uh, which is what will be the accounting if goods are sold through agent?
Uh, what will be the accounting if the goods are sold, uh, to an agent, uh, brother, this would be a normal sales transaction. You would be selling it, uh, uh, you know, the agent is, uh, considered, uh, in view of the principle, so you would be selling it. I don't think any other question is there, so, uh, let's proceed to the next, uh, part which is deferred delivery sales in the books of the seller. Now, uh, Salam or Istasna goods delivered, uh, would be, uh, recorded in. Uh, by the seller, you have received cash from the buyer. So this cash would be recorded in case of Salam transaction at the time of entering into a Salam contract as Salam goods deliverable. Uh, you will not be making a cash payment, you will be giving goods, so you would record. giving goods, so you would record this amount as Salam goods deliverable which would be equal to the amount of cash that you have received. And in case of Istasna, you would record this as Istasna goods deliverable. Uh again, which is equivalent to the amount that you have received. Uh when you deliver the Istasna or Salam goods, um then you would record this as a uh 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 sale transaction. Uh but uh subsequent measurement of Salam or Istasna goods deliverable would be uh a liability against Salam and Istasna goods and it would be measured at its outstanding amount. You would not record, uh you would not record any impairment. Uh one does deferred delivery sales contracts may be possible. There may be a situation where under a deferred delivery sale contract, uh there is a possibility that you will incur a loss in future. So if there is a loss in future, you would record it as a one risk commitment according to Financial Accounting Standard thirty and uh recorded on uh the current. Inventories uh usually are subsequently measured uh based on uh lower of cost or N R V. Uh now, in this case, uh generally accepted accounting policies uh shall be applied in respect of accounting and financial reporting for inventory intended to be sold at a later date. Uh, so A O P does not have their own standard for inventory and in that situation, the hierarchy provided in uh uh paragraph seven of the A O P conceptual framework. It says that if there is no accounting standard uh issued by A O P or if similar accounting is not provided by a financial accounting standard issued by A O P, then you need to follow the generally accepted accounting principles. So you may use the I S two, uh if you are choosing uh I F R S as your generally accepted accounting principle to record inventory. And this is the same as uh uh A O P uh described uh inventory item, which is uh lower of cost or enough. The revenue shall be recognized at gross value at the time of sale of subject matter uh to the buyer, which shall coincide with the time of transfer of control of inventory. So revenue would be recognized only when you transfer the inventory. Till that time, it would be shown as advance for Salam or Istasna goods. Uh in case of Istasna, where full or part of the price is to be received on deferred basis, then you may uh defer the profit and recognize it over the period uh uh according to Financial Accounting Standard twenty eight, uh which uh gives you the effective profit rate method to uh allocate profit over the period of time. And now we come to the presentation and disclosure uh in the books of the seller. In addition to the disclosure requirements as stated in Financial Accounting Standard one, we need to give the accounting policies deferred delivery, sale transactions. Salam, Istasna goods deliverable, inventory, revenue, cost of sales, profit, liability that is against Salam or Istasna good deliverable inventories that is held for deferred delivery. Uh it needs to be distinguished according to classification. We have discussed that both Salam and Istasna have uh unique characteristics, so any inventory for Salam has to be differentiated from uh uh inventory and uh according to Istasna transactions. Uh inventory, which is intended to be held for longer period, uh may have certain risks and you need to identify those risks in the disclosures. Sale, revenue, cost of sales, profit resulting from the deferred delivery uh for the financial period. And if it is a deferred delivery sale, then unamortized deferred profit would be there, which uh you need to show the movement of this uh from uh uh the opening balance till the closing balance. Uh and if there is any impairment, you need to uh give the allowance for impairment at any critical costs. The balance of receivables and good deliverables shall be presented, uh if there are material amounts, then you need to disclose uh separately between Salam and Istasna transactions and where the contract has a parallel element or a parallel Salam or Istasna, then you need to identify that the original transaction has a parallel element and give the disclosures for that. So.
Harun, if you may allow me, can you go back to rule number thirty four? There are amounts of material, the disclosures men- mentioned in paragraph thirty two may separately identify between the Salam and Istasna transactions. Don't you think that this may need to be defaced? Just highlight this.
Okay, uh Sister Sarah, we can actually make it better, we can always improve the verdict. Uh but, uh, Dr. Qasim, you can understand the objective, objective is that.
I I don't want to to recommend anything, leave it to them, but I think it it may.
Yeah.
There is some room for improve. So always identify comes with with uh an object, identify between the Salam and Istasna transactions. At the notes.
Right, right, so uh uh we will.
Identify it may be differentiate differentiate or something. But we will we will leave it.
Okay, okay, uh, yeah, yeah. So, uh, in, uh, Sister Sarah, just note that for identification, we may use a better word. Uh Sister Sarah, can you hear me?
Good noted, brother, I have.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yes, noted.
Thank you, Dr. Qasim. Uh uh yes, uh we would look for the right word because uh you are absolutely right, identifying uh does not actually cover the whole topic. So, uh, thank you for this. Uh you are welcome, brother. So, uh, we have discussed that uh parallel Salam and parallel Istasna, they are independent transactions from Salam and Istasna. So if there is a parallel Salam, uh we would record it separately as a buyer. Uh the accounting would be the same for buyer and seller as we have discussed it and the same goes for parallel Istasna. Uh the name parallel is there, but actually it's another Istasna contract with the same uh 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 subject matter and the same uh Salam uh subject. Now, in case uh where there is a subsequent change in price of the subject matter with mutual consent. Uh it would be considered as an event taking place at time of such agreement of change and shall not give rise to a gain or loss at that time. The eventual profit and loss and the change shall be recognized only uh once the sale to the eventual buyer is made. However, such a change event may be considered as an objective evidence of impairment or the necessary adjustment for net realizable, right? So, uh, this uh change with mutual consent in price would be considered as something happening at the time of such agreement or change. Uh we will not record a gain or loss at that time. Uh this gain or loss would come in when we would actually recognize the sale to the eventual buyer. So this would translate into the new price uh being uh 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 taken from the path. Uh and uh in case uh there is uh impairment, uh we would need to uh record the impairment on the date. Uh there could be a change in price uh of the subject matter of Istasna contract based on performance. Um, a change in price of the subject matter of an Istasna contract based on performance. Uh you are not meeting the delivery target, there is a delay on the delivery date. Uh and this may be according to a pre-agreed mechanism defined under the contract. It shall be accounted for in line with the requirements of paragraph thirty eight, which states that this will be uh recognized when the eventual sale happens. It will not be recognized uh on the day of the uh change in price. Now, this standard is applicable on or after first January twenty twenty seven. Uh this would, this date would be proposed to the board, uh and if participants uh think that this needs to be changed, you are always welcome to uh give comments on that, that uh the date should be maybe first January twenty eight or maybe. But this is the date that is being proposed to the accounting board for uh adoption. Uh we'll skip this uh part where uh the amendment is coming in, there is a process flow given at the end of the standard, uh which you can look at according to the uh process. Uh so this covers the first standard, which is deferred delivery sales, uh.
There are two questions, brother, there are two questions. Uh one question is on the process flow.
Yes.
Process flow for deferred delivery sale point number D, is it possible to sail back to the customer? Sell back to the customer?
Okay, now this is a Sharia issue, so uh, Dr. Qasim, I may request you to answer it.
Salaam alaikum. Uh as a matter of fact, when you purchase something from a party, if you stipulate in the first agreements that you sell it back to it to to the same party, this is not permissible. But if it happens that you purchase it from a party for yourself or to sell it to another party or for another reason. And then after you take the delivery or even, I am sorry, when you take the delivery and you sell it to the same customer under certain circumstances, there is no Sharia baron on such a sale. Provided it was not stipulated, it was not a condition in the first thing. And it was not part of an arrangement, even if it was not stipulated over there, but it was understood uh committed by the customer, by by the seller, the first seller, that he will buy. Yes, if it is uh under uh a separate promise to purchase uh under certain conditions, this can be uh an obligation of the customer to purchase, but he cannot at any time, he may re- make or back out from his promise. So it is not a sale, the conditions. This is the Sharia position.
Thank you very much, Dr. Qasim, thank you. I hope this answers the question.
Um, one more question. Uh what will be the accounting treatment in case the seller is unable to deliver the Salam or Istasna goods by delivery date? Subsequently, the similar goods should be bought in market?
Uh yes, brother, uh subsequently, he needs to arrange it from the market and then uh deliver it to queue. Uh in that case, there may be a situation where the goods may not be of the specified condition. And we have discussed that then this is where you would uh assess it for any impairment. But, uh, yes, uh, you can actually arrange it from the market and give it. So considering we don't have any other questions, uh.
Oh, brother, Aris Salan has raised his hand, is is it, uh, is there a question?
Yes, I have uh one comment, in fact suggestion uh with respect to inventories disclosure. So as we, the current treatment is perfectly fine, lower of cost or N R V, it's aligned with I F R S as well. However, as we know that uh most of the financial institutions, when they calculate their zaka and for the purpose of zaka calculation, market value of the, you know, asset is required and I think both of these uh inventories, whether Istasna, Salam, they will qualify for zakatable assets. So in the situation where cost is less than N R V, uh I would suggest that disclosure should be required that institution must disclose the market value of the inventory. Whether it is recorded at cost or N R V, disclosure should be there. So it will be easier for the person who is calculating zaka to properly calculate the card for the institution. This is specific to these two standards as well as uh to other standards like Muraba, if they go for revision in the future.
Thank you, brother Aris Salan. Uh I think this is covered in the zaka standard presentation and disclosure also, but we will uh recommend to the uh working group to make this uh part of uh this standard and the development standard also, you know, just a reference to that, so that uh you know zaka calculation is easy. Thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
Uh Sister Sarah, is there any other question or should we?
No, there's no uh further question.
Right. So, uh, let me start with the Istasna.
Sorry, sorry, brother Harun, there's one question. Uh if this is not actually delivery is delayed due to vendor issues or if the vendor has to be replaced, is there a standard which guides the F I on penalty that can be levied on the vendor?
Uh this would actually come under governance or Sharia. Uh I don't think so, uh Sharia, but uh maybe governance, Amadhan, am I right?
Uh yes, brother, uh because yes penalties were not discussed here, yeah, on the.
Uh uh, Dr. Qasim would correct me if I am wrong, but you know, uh we cannot have a standard on what type of penalties could be levied. This has to be done by the Sharia board.
Uh brother Harun, this is Rama from the I P. Dr. Qasim is currently uh.
Okay. Thanks. So, uh, starting with uh the next uh standard that is Istasna based development contracts. Uh I'll skip the preface because this is almost the same as uh the deferred delivery sale contract. Uh both of these uh standards uh uh they share uh common items. So, uh, we'll just skip that and go to the main part uh that is relevant. Uh why we issued this standard, we have covered this, um. Now, the change here is that deferred delivery sale transaction based on Istasna, which is short term has been included in the deferred delivery sales uh uh financial accounting standard, which we covered just earlier. Uh this development standard only uh talks about Istasna products, which have considerable effort uh uh to develop uh with. This is covered in the definition of uh development. Uh we will cover that. So, uh the development standard is only applicable uh for Istasna transactions uh which uh are, which exhibit the characteristics uh of a developer. Uh this is uh not covering the deferred delivery sales uh which is covered in the earliest. So, uh, let me skip this also. Uh we have covered that, so let's jump into the scope directly. Um, the standard applies to accounting and financial reporting for Istasna based development contracts. Uh and the definition is given in uh paragraph five, we have already discussed it when we were discussing the previous standard. Um, and there are certain Istasna transactions that are excluded from the scope uh in paragraph three. So, these transactions uh. So these transactions uh do not meet the criteria for an istasna based development contract. And then are subject to accounting as a deferred delivery sale transaction which is uh covered in the earlier standard. Such istasna transactions have a total development period of less than twelve months, so if it is a development project. Uh with a development period of less than twelve months, then also it will not be part of the current standard. It will be part of the deferred delivery sale, so in this standard uh we only uh. Would cover those istasna development projects uh which have a development period of more than twelve months. So salam transactions, istasna transactions which are plain deferred delivery and any development. Istasna transactions which are of less than twelve months are covered in the uh deferred delivery sale. Uh financially. The institution being a customer of an istasna based development contract has intentions to either lease out and eventually sell. Or otherwise transfer the subject matter under a Jara Murtiya Pitya or use for its own operation. Uh uh Siren, uh Marjan, uh please uh also uh. Check it out, uh because this is the same wording that is coming in from the previous standard and Dr. Kassim had a view on this, so we need.
Yes.
Mark it here also.
Okay.
Customer in this uh. Standard is the buyer who acquires the subject matter under an istasna based development contract. Uh we have covered deferred delivery sale transaction uh in the previous standard. So we will not uh uh go through the definition again, developer is the manufacturer. Constructor, producer, processor, fabricator or builder. Who develops or manufactures and then sells the subject matter under an istasna based. So it could be a long term development contract for a plant and machinery, for example, a cement plant. It could be a construction of a long term uh. Construction project, for example, a construction of a multi-story building, so um. In that case, the developer is the person who is manufacturing or constructing that subject. Uh we have covered istasna and we have covered the istasna based development contract also. Parallel istasna is in arrangement where the seller developer enters in another independent istasna contract with a third party. Uh this is the same as parallel salam and we have discussed that istasna and parallel istasna are independent. So you can enter into any one of them, uh there is no sequence for them, you can enter into the second contract first. And the first contract afterwards itself. Stage of completion method, at times referred to as percentage of completion method. Is the recognition of revenue in expenses by reference to stage of completion of a development contract. Under this method, development contract revenues match with the development contract project costs incurred in reaching the stage of completion. So uh. The percentage of cost that has been incurred uh in reference to the percentage of uh revenue. Would give you a stage of completion and this would be worked out for uh the work completed uh proportion part. Now, first we need to find out which uh. Contracts would be coming in this standard, so istasna based development contract within the scope of this contract is a contract. Of istasna, it cannot be a salam contract, salam would automatically go in the deferred delivery sales. It is normally an item of property, plant and equipment or an investment property duly meeting the following criteria. Uh the first criteria is very important that it involves a significant element of effort on part of the developer. Including labor and services and the developer needs a compensation for that. And in the case of a force major where uh you will not be taking the building or the planted machinery. Because of any reason, uh still the developer would ask you to be compensated. So uh the effort part must be there in this uh uh istasna based development. It has either an element of partial control transferred through milestone based delivery and or construction development on the customer's own property. Or otherwise define multiple performance obligation as part of the contract. That may individually be assessed and used as criteria for determining stage of completion, uh and this. Uh. Contract uh must have certain milestones uh which are to be treated as uh. Obligations, performance obligations and based on these performance obligations, you would be determining uh the stage of. Uh. Let me clarify here that uh previously, uh we had international accounting standard eleven construction contracts. Uh which has been now superseded by I F R S fifteen revenue with customs. And I F R S usually generally does not recognize percentage of completion. Uh revenue is to be recognized based on milestones. Uh but uh. In istasna based development contracts, uh. This is a unique type of situation where profit needs to be recognized based on the stage of competition. So uh this is the reason that uh uh this uh development contracts have been uh. Put in in this standard uh and uh stage of completion method uh included for revenue. Should otherwise, you know, it would, it won't be possible for uh istasna pro- uh products to uh recognize any revenue. The subject matter is intended to address certain specific needs of an identified unique customer. In istasna development contracts, uh you will usually have a unique customer who wants a unique asset. Which does not have a ready market and it is usually, this asset is usually not uh suitable for sale to a third. And it has a considerable original total development period, uh this development period could be. A single or multiple phase period or branches, so development period in the specific context of this definition. Criteria shall not be confused with or considered interchangeably changeably with the deferred delivery. Development period is the period for development of this particular subject matter. It is not to be confused with the time when you are giving the delivery, so you may keep. The asset in your inventory for an extended period of time and then delivering it due to any reason. Uh this is not development, development is the date from which you start uh constructing or manufacturing this. For subject matter and the date on which you have completed, it has nothing to do with the deferred delivery. Now. Uh the initial recognition uh of development contract project cost. Uh which is to be recognized and asset uh would be based on the costs that have been incurred directly on the subject matter. Uh indirect overheads needs to be added to this cost, uh. You need to exclude any idle capacity element of the fixed overheads and only take the indirect overheads. That are uh objectively attributable to this development project. And any other costs that are specifically chargeable to the customers under the contract. Uh this would be part of the development contract project cost and you would record this cost as an asset. In your statement of financial position. Now, general and administrative expenses, selling expenses, research costs, they are not included in this development. Or like uh project cost, uh so in if I talk in layman terms, this is uh uh. A type of work in processing or a work in progress uh account. Uh the costs are built into this development contract project cost uh until the asset is complete. And we only take uh the direct costs, we don't take uh administrative, selling and research costs. The development contract project cost may be reduced by any incidental income, which is not included in the development contract cost. There have been a contractor, for example, income from the sale of surplus material, income on the disposal of related plant and equipment. Uh and services provided to third parties losing the resources allocated to the development contract, so. You bought uh raw material, uh maybe ten thousand uh bags of cement. To construct the building, but only eight thousand were used, two thousand remained, uh you sold them off, so you would. Re-recognize this amount by reducing the development contract project. Development contract project cost includes the cost attributable to a development contract for the period from the date of securing the contract. To the final completion uh of the development contract delivery of the subject material. And usually it also includes the testing period also, so if there is a trial run or something like that, uh this part would also be. Costs directly relating to securing a development contract such as legal fee, feasibility reports, uh marketing research, engineering surveys. Uh they are also included as part of the uh the development contract cost, uh project cost and uh. If they can be separately identified and measured reliably and it is virtually certain that the contract will be secured. Then only you would recognize them, otherwise you would charge them for profit and cost. Uh. Development contract progress billing account is also created, this would be the receivables from the customer and you will uh. You will uh produce a progressive billing mechanism which would be a liability or a corresponding liability. Uh when and whenever you send a bill and this would be uh uh recorded uh as development contract progress billing. Uh sometimes you get a mobilization advance uh which is given the given by customer. Subsequent measurement would be uh the development contract project cost at end of the period uh. It shall be carried at the cumulative cost because this is an account which is uh increasing every day, all costs are parked in. And uh you will check it for impairment and impairment is according to fast third. If there is an allowance of impairment uh according to fast thirty. Uh then you would record this uh uh from the development contract project cost. A delay in or inability of the customer to make contractually agreed a progress payments against the development contract. Shall be considered as an objective evidence of impairment, so if the customer is not making payments on time. Uh this actually is a a a trigger to make an assessment of impairment. Development project. Uh contract project costs uh subsequently measured shall include the cumulative amount of periodically recognized development contract profit. Uh so we would recognize profit on stage of completion basis and add it to the development contract cost uh. Uh any receivables uh from the customers, uh net of recoveries and adjustments shall be subsequently measured. At carrying valueless expected credit loss, now this is a receivable which is payable in cash, so uh it would be. Uh exposed to the expected credit loss region uh according to uh fast thirty. Uh in case receivables from the customers after completion of development contract and delivery of the subject matter involving a deferred payment. An amortized, unamortized amount of deferred profit shall be shown as a deduction from the cross uh uh amount of the received. So if uh this istasna contract also includes a deferred uh payment sales. Uh add on, uh then you would uh show the unamortized amount of the deferred profit as a deduction from your uh total profit. Uh we have discussed the allowance of uh the allowances, expected credit loss and impairment, they would be treated as such. Uh subsequent measurement of the development contract progress billing account at the end of each financial reporting period shall be. Uh reported as. The end of the financial period, the net liability shall be shown as a development contract progress billing account and the net asset shall be shown as. The uh. Development contract progress uh at the net value. Uh Sister Sarah, is there any question till now?
There was a question, um basically. Uh anonymous attendee has asked, it is not clear on the scope of the E D on istasna as stated in paragraph of the E D. Does the standard uh is meant to be applied by the property developer or an I F I?
So this uh this needs to be uh um used by the uh I F I, not by the property developer. So uh the Islamic financial institution is uh uh developing on behalf of a customer. Now, you may not be developing yourself, you may be subcontracting it to somebody else, but you are the.
Same person has another query, the term used in the E D is istasna based contract. Why is that so, why not using istasna contract, please explain the difference between the two if any?
Okay, so uh uh we discussed it earlier at the start that uh the deferred delivery sale uh. Contracts, they include both istasna and salam. So the discussion was that they share a lot of common elements, so at the deferred delivery. Uh the deferred delivery sale. Uh standard which we discussed earlier, it includes salam and istasna. Uh now this development contract uh but uh uh E D is only for those istasna based development contracts. Which uh you know which exhibit the characteristics uh shown in paragraph five, the definition of the development. So this is only for those long term istasna contracts uh which are of development nature. But short term istasna contracts would actually be covered by the first E. Right, so if there is those other question uh we uh.
Then no other question, do you want to take a break for uh prayers uh at this stage of data?
Uh I think uh it would be finished off in maybe twenty minutes, so uh let's complete this and then take a break at the end. Right, because uh we don't have too much uh.
Okay, okay.
Right. So uh development contract revenue uh accrued revenue against development contract is to be recorded as a receivable. Against the development contract progress and there is a debatable presumption that in all istasna based development contracts. The revenue may always be reliably measured as this is generally a fixed price. However, in certain circumstances where variation in revenue are expected due to variation in delivery date, extra work or change in specifications. Approved estimate of the revenue shall be applied for the purpose of application of stage of completion method. So because it is a fixed price uh uh contract usually, uh so uh the concept is that. You may identify the stage of completion, so you can easily identify. Uh what stage are you on and the few receivables uh can be recorded as receivables. In case of a mutually agreed change in development contract price. In case of a mutually agreed change in development contract price, the total expected revenue. Uh any such change shall be incorporated in the total amount of expected revenue as in when contractually agreed. So if there is a change uh uh by both parties in the price of the product. Which is usually not there, but in certain some cases it may happen. Then your revenue would change and this would be infor- incorporated on the date on which it is contractually agreed. And then we will uh start uh including it. In salam, this has to be done at the end of the contract when the sale happens. But in istisna, it would be on the date on which uh uh the the contract is changed uh because of price. In case of such transactions, where full or part of the price is to be received on a deferred basis after the delivery of the subject matter. The revenue referred to in paragraph eighteen twenty one for the purpose of application of stage of completion method. Shall exclude an appropriate proportion of the revenue which shall be deferred and recognized over a period of time in line with requirements of. Respective financial accounting standard that is muraba and other deferred payment saves. So uh this actually talks about the situation where after the istisna development. Uh the sale is done through a muraba contract, then the requirements of muraba would be applicable from the second leg of this transaction. An appropriate amount of revenue to be deferred in line with the requirements of paragraph twenty two. Shall be equal to the difference between total sale price of the subject matter. And the estimate equivalent cash sale price that would have been paid in case a full settlement of the same had taken place. At the time of delivery of the subject matter. So uh in case uh the payment is on deferred delivery. You would uh uh find out an estimate of the price uh uh between the total sale price. And the equivalent cash save price because you are paying it uh 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 on a deferred date. Uh this difference is because you are not paying the full price right now and this would be advertised. Development contract cost of revenue at the end of each financial reporting period shall be recognized on a stage of completion basis. Uh so we would recognize revenue based on the stage of completion that have been uh uh complete. Based on the cost and the selling price corresponding to the development contract revenue. Uh the development contract cost of revenue may include an additional cost element in case of under situations uh uh because under uh. Situation uh does that would happen in future needs to be included in the cost. And because of this, the stage of completion would change and this effect will be possible if there is a. Now, uh the subsequent measurement of uh the stage of completion method. Under the stage of completion method, development contract revenue is recognized through the statement of income. Uh of the relevant financial reporting period in proportion to the stage of completion of the subject matter. So if you have completed sixty percent of the goal, then you would record sixty percent of the revenue and sixty percent of the project cost as an expense. And uh of course uh sixty percent of the profit would be. If there is an unrest loss whereby it is expected that a total development contract project would exceed the total development revenue. It shall be immediately recognized irrespective of stage of completion of the development. So if you. Uh uh find out that the total cost of the uh development is more than the revenue. Then this amount should be recorded as unrest loss and uh included uh um. Irrespective of whatever stage you are in. A change in estimate with regard to total development contract revenue and the total development contract project cost that results in an increase of. Uh reversal of a previously recognized unrest loss shall be immediately recognized in the statement of income. In case such change in estimate results in a situation whereby. Uh the revised total development contract revenue in case of uh uh. Contract reno- renegotiation exceed the revised estimate of the total development contract project. Profit recognition on the basis of stage of competition shall be received. So if uh there is a situation where the total. Development contract revenue and the total development contract uh project costs. Uh because of the recognition of unrest loss, uh it is uh not possible. To find out the correct uh uh percentage. Then in that case you would uh uh. Find out uh estimated uh change and then revise the total development contract revenue. And record it uh based on that and we will run. Uh derecognition would be at the time of the conclusion of the contract and completion. Of and handover delivery of the subject matter to the customer. The development contract project cost and the development contract progress mailing uh both accounts would be derecognized. Uh any difference in these uh uh uh. Accounts will be recorded in the statement of income, it could be uh gain or a dos. Uh in most of the circumstances, both accounts shall have equal value, so they would net off. But in certain situations, there could be a difference in value. Uh this value would come in uh because of the impairment loss that we have recognized. Uh otherwise, they would always be the baddest. So they would set off each other. Now, if uh you are not able to assess the stage of completion. This would be an unusual circumstance uh and the total expected development contract project costs uh. Are not uh measurable reliably. Then you need to cease to follow the accounting prescribed this uh by this standard. Uh and uh follow the requirements of uh. A O P Financial Accounting Standard which is applicable on deferred delivery sales. If such limitation is identified during the first financial reporting. So you would cease to follow this standard and start following the deferred delivery sales uh uh. Standard which we covered earlier. And you also cease to recognize any development contract revenue. And reverse any revenue that you have already recognized uh in the excess of already recognized development contract cost. If such limitation is identified, substance point to the preceding financial reporting period. So any uh revenue which is in excess of the cost needs to be reversed back because now you are following the. Uh uh deferred delivery say. In case uh. You are unable to um uh assess the stage of completion and you have reversed the uh uh revenue. Once a reasonable estimate of both the stage of completion and the total expected development contract cost can be made. The remaining development contract revenue and profit shall be recognized on a stage of completion basis. Including any cumulative of effect of the same as of that date. So afterwards, if you. Are able to once again assess the stage of completion, then you would start following this standard again. And uh uh follow the stage of completion method and recognize revenue and uh costs. Under istisna based development contracts uh shall be dealt with in line with uh A O P FAS. On uh impairment, credit loss and under commitments that is financial accounting standard thirty. Uh then we come to the presentation and disclosure part which is the general presentations uh uh apart from. Which are given in financial accounting standard one, you need to give uh the minimum disclosures. Uh like accounting policies, the project cost at the end of the financial reporting period. The liability for development contract progress billing and the receivables from the customers. The development contract revenue, the development contract project costs of revenue. And the profit which is coming out of this project. If there is an unamortized deferred profit, then you need to show the movement of this for the year. And if there is an allowance for impairment, then you need to uh disclose this uh allowance for impairment. The balance of the istisna development project in progress and outstanding progress billings. Uh they needs to be presented on the appropriate side of the statement of financial position without netting off. So these would be two different accounts which are uh uh on the dividend credit side. And where the contract includes a parallel element, then this would be separately disclosed. Uh because it's a separate uh 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 contract from the original istisna. So now we are done uh with istisna based development contract in the books of the uh seller. Uh we would now start with the buyer, but before this, are there any questions?
There is one more question uh by the same uh person. Thank you for the clarification on the scope. If you may share, is there a current example of financial reporting from any publicly available annual report of Islamic banks? Where the Islamic bank is constructing or dwelling an asset property on behalf of the customer. I would like to read the I F I annual report to further understand the current financial reporting practice and the applicability of this ED. To an I F I in general. Thank you.
Uh thank you for the question. Uh on top of my head, I don't have a name. But Islamic Development Bank, I S T B has uh these projects. So um but uh. I'm not sure that uh they give this detail because this is a standard. Uh be- because their products are completely different from a normal system. Uh they are basically giving this to the uh uh so there are certain sovereign uh limitations uh applicable. Uh uh we will look into this and if uh there is an example, we will uh come back. Like sister, so should we uh uh move to the next part?
Uh brother Salon has raised his hand.
Uh brother Salon, uh please uh.
Yes, uh I have actually two comments on this uh standard. One is again the same one which we discussed in the previous related to scope of the standard.
Yes.
I hope you will. Okay. The second is uh what I understood from this standard is that revenue shall be recognized. In accordance with the stages of completion, right? Uh however, you know practically what happens uh under istisna, banks disperse funds in accordance with stages of completion. But uh from Sharia perspective, uh they don't conclude the contract. Completion is done accordingly, dispersment is made, but delivery does not happen, right?
Yes.
So how how that you know practically that uh actual situation will be catered to under this standard? Shall we wait for the conclusion of istisna or stages of completion is already there?
No brother, uh now this concept of performance uh milestones have been included here. So if uh you see the slides, uh there are performance milestones. Once you uh attain the milestone, you can recognize the revenue. You know, so uh the contracts uh needs to be incorporating the milestones. This is a change since I F R S fifteen came up. Uh this is a change in conventional accounting contracts also. And the same would happen here. Uh so. Right, so so you so maybe you know a milestone could be that uh you have uh uh. Constructed the first floor, that is one milestone. The second floor could be the second milestone, you know. You can actually build milestone in different.
Okay, thank you. But uh the point here is uh istisna will not be concluded, okay? There are performance milestones, but from the you know the concept which is the con- transfer of control. Which is you know the basic requirement. So the property is still under construction. It's not delivered uh under istisna risk and everything of the properties with the customer. Uh on the other side, I did not get control, but I'm still recognizing the revenue. So isn't this contradicting with the you know fundamental principle?
No, uh brother, you are making an effort or you are constructing and you are recording revenue in your uh financial statements. You know, uh being a bank, you have the uh you have the asset on your books which you are constructing for the customer. And uh based on the milestones, you are recognizing revenue.
This is my point, okay? I am I have completed the asset certain milestones, but still control is not transferred, right?
Control is.
The control or risk is with me.
Yes, that's why the asset is on your books. Because if you transfer the control also, then the asset would go out of your books.
Yes.
Right? So um you know brother, uh till uh we are constructing the asset or manufacturing it. In case of plant machinery, it will remain in our books. Uh the work in process would increase uh the development uh account. And uh you know, uh we would recognize uh revenue based on the milestones, the stage of completion. And once it is completely, we will hand it over and then it we would derecognize it. And uh it will go in the customer's.
So just for you know understanding, thank you very much. So can we say that this treatment is actually a bit of deviation from the fundamental principles? Where we normally ask, for example, in the salam, we said revenue shall only be recognized when control of the inventory is transferred to other party. In this case, control is with the bank, is constru- bank is constructing. But still bank is recognizing at the time same time revenue. So it's a bit of deviation from the uh.
So brother, that is that is actually a Sharia debate and I don't want to get into that because I'm not a Sharia expert, right?
No, accounting, it's from accounting perspective, boss.
Uh for from accounting perspective, uh yes, uh because we have introduced the concept of performance. Uh uh milestones, we can we can actually recognize revenue. And this is aligned with I F R S also. If you look into I F R S fifteen, it also talks about performance milestones.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Right, thank you. So uh uh let's move to the next uh uh part which is uh istisna based development contracts. In the books of the customer, the buyer. Um the buyer has given advance. Uh so advanced cash payments paid by the customer to the developer in the form of mobilization advance or progress billing. Shall be recognized as in when the advanced payment is made uh in lump sum or installments. Uh if any in line with the contractual arrangements as advance against istisna based development project. Equivalent to the amount of cash paid. So the buyer would uh make a payment. To the uh bank uh in advance and record it as istisna based development project. Uh uh advance against istisna based development project. Uh he would not record it as a receivable because he would be getting this istisna based development project in. So uh this would be advance against istisna based development. Uh this advance at the end of each financial period. Shall be reported at its carrying value unless any transfers to the istisna based development project in uh progress account. Less allows for expected credit losses. So there could be a situation where uh uh there may be a credit loss. So you need to record this according to financial accounting standard thirty impairment, credit losses and progress. Uh a delay in or inability of the developer to perform delivery of the subject matter is uh evidence of impairment. And you need to uh uh make an assessment for the impairment because of this delay. Now. Istisna based development project in progress and end of each financial reporting period. Shall be recognized to the extent of the project's stage of completion as of that date. So this is the work in progress account which is based on the project's stage of completion. Uh through transfer from advance against istisna based development project or by way of recognizing a liability. Which is payable to the developer in case such estimate is in excess of the advance or equity. Uh explanation is also given here to just clarify. A liability to be recorded in this respect should not be confused with any progress billing from. A liability to be recorded in this respect shall not be confused with any progress billing from the developer. Unless the same is strictly corresponding to the stage of completion of the istasna based development project, any such progress billing in the excess of stage of completion may constitute a form commitment but not a liability. So any progress billing is not coming in the istasna based development project in progress account, they are separate, they need to be separately identified. And this account is completely distinct from the. Now, this account shall be subject to impairment testing at the end of the financial reporting period. And if there is any impairment, it would be according to Financial Accounting Standard thirty. We have done it. Now, once the subject matter is complete and it is delivered from the developer to the customer, the time when the customer requires the complete control, the risk and rewards incented to the ownership, that is the time on which the buyer would acquire the subject. A delivery of the subject matter not matching the contractual specifications may trigger a need for reassessment of impairment. If the delivery is not according to specifications, then you need, you may need to make another assessment of impairment based on this. Presentation and disclosure, you have to follow Financial Accounting Standard one, general presentations and also provide accounting policies for the development transactions. How would you recognize advance against istasna based development projects, based on projects in progress, etc. Disclose the advances, if it is in full or in part developer, what is the stage of completion of the subject matter and any movement in that? And if there is any impairment, you need to disclose this. You need to also disclose the total progress billing to date, which is due for payment, it should be cross and net both amounts. Adjusted for payments made against the progress billing to date or adjusted against advance payments. And you should need to show the movement also. And if there is any commitment for making any payments, you need to show that. So falling within the next twelve months or after the twelve months period, so it should be classified into two parts. You need to also disclose sale of subject matter according to the sale based on that agency or as direct sale, how will you be selling that? Amounts receivable against the sale by locating between receivable from the eventual buyer and the agent. Revenue and profit recognized if there is an expected trade loss and if there is an unrest commitment, you need to classify them accordingly. And if there is any amount of amount written off or saved with the nature of this transaction, it to disclose this also. The balance of istasna based development project in progress and outstanding progress billings shall present from appropriate side of the statement of financial positions, you will not let it off, they would be shown separately. And if there is a parallel element, then this would be separately identified. This is a completely different. So we have discussed parallel istasna, so I'll just skip this slide because that is a separate company. Separate contract. We have also discussed the unrest part. Subsequent change in price or cost in istasna, there could be a change in price or cost. So if there is any subsequent change, it shall be accounted for when it becomes virtually set. When you are certain that this price would be there, then you need to record this. Any change in the eventual profit or loss shall be adjusted according to the changes in estimates and respective computations according to the stage of completion. Because the revenue or the cost has changed, the price or cost has changed. That's why the stage of completion method and the revenue would also change and this change would be recomputed based on the change in progress. This standard is also planned to be adopted on or after first January twenty twenty seven. And early adoption is encouraged. So this covers the second standard, the istasna based development standard. So now the floor is open for any questions if you have any questions. This is the time. Sister Sarah, are there any questions?
No, there are no more questions.
So I think this is included from my side.
Is there a question? Okay, there is one question from Deep Amar.
Can, can you share this question?
You just write, I have a question.
Okay, brother Deek, can you write the question? Or if you may allow brother Deek to open his mic.
The question is, is istasna available to contract by the seller or buyer?
Brother, it could be both because, you know, we have istasna and we have parallel istasna. So yes, it could be both sides, seller or the buyer and they are independent of each other. So just to explain, on one contract, the bank may be the developer and the customer would be there to buy it. And in a parallel istasna, the customer would then send it to someone else. So yes, this would be possible. Right. So thank you very much, Sister Sarah. Would you close the session?
Thank you, brother Harun, for the insightful presentation and question and answer session. We'd like to thank again Dubai Islamic Bank, all the participants and all our colleagues here in A O P. See you, Insha Allah, in the next future event. Maasalam.